The Riddell City Council. There are volume matters. Is that good times?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, proclamation for National Human Trafficking Prevention Law. Is Deborah Shaffey here?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, I'm sorry to make. Hi.
Hi.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Glad to read the proclamation to you.
Sure, please.
And if you would like to say something afterwards, that'd be great.
I will, thank you.
Proclamation of the City of Del, California. Whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created within alienable right of freedom and the Thirteenth Amendment to the Constitution making slavery illegal. And whereas slavery within the United States today is most often found in the form of human trafficking, which weakens our social fabric, increases violence, organized crime, and debases our humanity. And whereas victims of human trafficking are typically forced to work in various forms of labor exploitation, including but not limited to commercial sex acts, drug processing, and distribution and other services induced through force, fraud, and coercion. And whereas, due to its isolating nature, many individuals locally and across the globe are unaware that trafficking exists in the cities and neighborhoods of Humboldt County. And whereas 20 million men, women, and children around the world are victims of human trafficking. And whereas Seraptimus International of Arcata, Ill River Valley, Eureka, Humboldt Bay, McKinleyville, and the Ravswoods are all working to abolish human trafficking through education, advocacy, and collaboration. Now, therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Riddell, California hereby calls upon and for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, there too, we're likely talking here.
Recording in progress.
Thank you, Mayor and the City Council of Riddell for recognizing the very great importance of preventing human trafficking. One of the ways that Seraptimus in the Valley and the other ones mentioned here and our international organization in over 140 countries worldwide works on doing this is by helping women get educated. Our job and our mission is to help women to get the training and the education they need to be to achieve economic empowerment. The empowered female as well as empowered men, that the empowered female is our mission, is less likely to be vulnerable to human trafficking. And for that, we thank you. And like they say, if you see something, if you hear something, tell somebody. It's out there, it's everywhere, go sit in the mall someday and look around.
Thank you so very much, and thank you for all the work your organization does.
Thank you.
We greatly appreciate it. Public presentation. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph and Brown Act. Items requiring council action not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak to an issue not on the agenda? Welcome. Thank you for coming, Happy New Year.
Thank you, I just wanted to come up here today and introduce myself. I am Gina McLendon, I am one of your candidates for District Two Supervisor. I thought it was important to come here today to introduce myself to the council. But I also wanted to introduce myself to the community to show that I am taking an interest in learning and getting up to speed as soon as possible before this campaign that I'm about to embark on that I'm participating in currently. So I'm sure I've been everybody hello. I do business in Fortuna, I'm a business owner of 25 years in Fortuna. I've been raised in District Two since I was three years old. But I just wanted to say, since I have three minutes, that as I'm out here pounding the pavement during my campaign meeting people knocking on doors and talking to your community, I think it's easy for people to come up here and complain about things that are going wrong. And I didn't want to do that tonight, I just wanted to point out three things to the council that I hear over and over and over again as I'm talking to your residents. I would like to just commend the volunteer fire department for the great job they're doing in the community because it's been overwhelming, the same thing is repeated over and over of what a great asset they are to our community, and I think that deserves recognition. I also hear led by Chief Greg Allen, what a great job the police department is doing with their limited resources and the things, the magic that they're making happen. So I thought that was important. And finally, the Riddell Community Center led by Sarah Reback in Providence. I just want to point out, I've been there many times in the last couple of weeks. She probably gives a little giggle every time she sees me come up. But I just want to recognize her for the great work she's doing in this community as well. So thank you, and it's nice to meet everybody.
Thank you, thanks for coming and introducing yourself. Welcome.
Hi, this is the council, thank you, Happy New Year. Suzanne with Mortgage Advisors here in Riddell. I wasn't planning to do this, but the opportunity arises to ask for support on Measure A, to vote no, for those of you who don't know much about it. It is cannabis ordinance that has been renewed by two private individuals. And they positioned it as the for the small farmer and keeping the gag out. Well, I think Humboldt is doing enough to keep the gag out. But what this initiative also does is it restricts the farmers, the local small farmers. There isn't anybody that I know of in my community and beyond that is in favor of this measure. And it would actually stop in its tracks any monies coming to the county with regards to environmental grant funding, which CDFW has over $13 million earmarked for cannabis farmers. We are working with a couple of different nonprofit agencies to secure more of this money. Our company, Help Cannabis for Conservation, secured $1.1 million already for water tank storage for individual farms in Humboldt. This funding would end completely if these folks vote Measure A. And so it's, like I said, I wasn't prepared, it's very passionate for me because it will stop the small farmers here in Humboldt that are trying just to exist. They too want to keep the gag out, everybody does, but this ordinance will not take care of that. If you look at the website, the endorsements are everyone from Michelle Bushnell and others on the Board of Supervisors, Police Hansel, Sheriff Hansel. It just goes on and on, community members, nobody is in favor of this initiative. But it's being positioned for small farmers to keep big ag out, and that is doing just the opposite, so vote no on Measure A.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to say anything? Are there any hand raised? There any email?
No.
Then we will close public presentations. Consent calendar, is there a council member who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Okay, if anyone in the public wants to remove anything, then I will ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion to the second, please vote. Councilmember Carter?
I vote yes, yes.
Here is my zero. Now we'll move on to reports from staff communications, page 58 in our packet. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes, members of the council. So one day item coming up is the annual homelessness length in time count, which is scheduled to occur during the morning of Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. So that's a week from today. If you're interested in volunteering for the count, we encourage you to contact City Hall and myself at 707-764-3532. There's also on the Humboldt County website, there are some links to sign up for the count. So we are here in Riddell, part of the Fortuna subgroup. But there are sub-subgroups inside of that, and one of them is Riddell and Scotia. And so we have, over the past couple of years that the counts occurred, we have assembled a team to go out and do these counts. And it would be great to have additional volunteer resources to go out and do the site. When you look at the different geographies, ours is relatively small compared to the others. So the more volunteers that we have, the quicker it will go. And so we'll send people out in at least pairs. And then you also need access to a mobile device, a cellular phone with data to populate the census information. So again, if you're interested, please give City Hall a call. And we'll be starting early on Tuesday morning and hope to have it wrapped up within about a couple hours or so. So thank you, with that, I'll return to the mayor for any questions of staff.
Councilmember Wilson?
Oh, is this just on point time?
No questions on anything on the staff report?
Typically, how many people do we find in the homeless when we do this? Like kind of arbitrary, fake data, and go out and count, you know? But how many do we normally find?
I'd have to look at the last, last couple of years worth of data, but we have found, you know, probably around a dozen or so. So there are, there's different ways of identifying. One is campsites, active campsites, or one is, you know, folks walking around or sleeping, that sort of thing. And then there's a voluntary question system in the app where if the individuals want to answer the questions, we can get some demographic information from them. And so I personally, I think, did three or four of them just last year, primarily, almost exclusively on Edwards Drive. And so it just kind of depends year to year. So the idea is all the jurisdictions, all the areas throughout California are doing the count at the same time. It's true that there are limitations to the method, but it's an attempt to try to gauge homelessness and shift in homeless populations. Thank you.
I have a question. Shall we?
Yeah, okay, okay. We have to do, I promise I'll get to there, we have to do this first, and then I'll break them. Okay. Then I'll.
Good for them.
Okay. And Woodall?
Could the resource center kind of be part of it? Because they have a lot from homeless people in the morning at the big account.
They are.
Oh, they are.
They're a part of the signing of people, of getting orders, that I'm gonna, thank you. Councilmember Carter?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
You need to check river bars. I live in the North Pacific. There's one person that's been homeless for two years down there, they will not leave. This is winter time, in the summer, we got five or six people camp on that river bar. Sometimes they're on our property, let me ask them, I'll do some, no. So you really need to check the river bars.
Thank you. Absolutely. So are there any other, oh, I'm sorry, could you state your name?
Oh, Nancy Adams. I invited her, I'm sorry.
Are there any other questions or comments on the staff report? Any hand raised? Any email? Then we will close that section. Move on to special presentations, presentation on the Ill River Trails Project, approved resolution number 1597-2024, adopting mitigated negative declaration and adopting the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting. Page 68 in our packet. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes, and members of the council. We do have Andrea Hilton from GHD here to give a brief overview on this and be able to answer any questions that the council may have. So I'll go ahead and invite Andrea.
Yeah, and is the council, can I clarify, are we familiar with the project? Some degree?
Yes.
Okay, so this is for the Ill River Trail project. In order to enhance the project, the city is required to complete CEQA. As you likely know, in all three states, or the public that might be listening, CEQA is required anytime a local or state agency makes a discretionary decision, such as the one before you today. GHD, I'm Andrea Hilton, I work for GHD, or you're a consultant. We prepared an initial study mitigated negative declaration for the project. The document reviewed all of the environmental resources on the CEQA checklist from aesthetics all the way through wildfire and alphabetical order. And there were no impacts that are significant after mitigation. The mitigation included in the document is very standard best management practices for air quality. So construction equipment isn't idling or creating dust, PM10, particulate matter 10 is the only particulate that is regulated in our air region. There's biological mitigation measures to make sure that the construction practices to construct, construct the trail through the riparian corridor are fully mitigated. So then pre-construction surveys for bats and other special status creatures, making sure that we're mitigating the riparian impact itself by removing a lot of the hamstrats and other invasive species that are present and that kind of thing. Doing pre-construction nesting bird seasons, for example, if we have to remove any vegetation outside of the, within the nesting bird season, the standard mitigation measures for any inadvertent discovery of cultural or paleontological resources. So the document was prepared, it was circulated to the public. And jurisdictional agencies, I believe it was from November 13th to December 13th, if memory serves, the city received no written comments. The CDFW is the state responsible agency, CDFW did not provide written comments, but they did request a field tour, which we attended with city staff. They provided some verbal input specifically requesting wildlife-friendly littered trash cans at the trailhead so that we don't have, you know, raccoons or corvids getting into the trash and creating a wildlife nuisance. They requested that we also remove the French broom and the English ivy, not just the hamstrats. So we've made those adjustments. And there was a one-page final ISMD that was prepared that captures that. And that's, that's it, there were no other comments received. So absent anything additional, the council might appear tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I'm really from a CEQA perspective, it was a fairly benign process, this project. It's largely supported by the community, which was evident by the lack of controversial comments received. And I'm happy to move you forward. If the council does decide to adopt and approve the project tonight, we'll take the signed notice of determination the city manager will sign. We'll make sure it gets filed, we'll put it at the courthouse and with the Office of Planning and Research as required. And that's it. Let me know if you have any questions.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Council, Mayor Proton Carter?
No questions, just really, really looking forward to getting a shovel in the ground and getting this project going, so that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson?
I have no questions, I accept that I assume this includes the modification from last more or less being a pretty ADA.
I think.
So I don't, I don't, it's not.
Yeah, the design, specific details, like the ones real head, yeah. So with CEQA, we always kind of go big, right? And that way, if you phase your project, you can always make your projects smaller. But because we've analyzed the maximum potential environmental impacts likely to occur, you don't have to go back and amend your document, which would be an additional expense in duration of the country of the city. So if, if there's a phasing of the project or the trail that gets built just a little bit in such a way that it's smaller, but not bigger essentially, then that's very normal within CEQA. We recommend it to avoid the expense and hassle of having to go back and file it later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last one on my.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, we got it. Is there a member of the public?
What you just spoke of.
Could you say your name?
Oh, Tom.
Okay.
Okay, so what you just spoke of, if ADA, wouldn't that make it increase, not decrease? Like if, if you guys ask for an ADA add-on or whatever, when you have to increase it, so wouldn't that, wouldn't that cost us more money? Does that make sense?
So the project from the inception of it always had to be 100% ADA.
Yeah.
So the, the recent strategy that has been implemented would be to phase the whole ADA implementation into a second phase. If bids come back in a manner that does not allow us to afford the project, once this move a project forward without exposing the city to additional added costs if bids come up.
Yeah, so the CEQA document evaluating the whole, that's the whole project. So if CEQA is not expired, that's fact. The city has that CEQA coverage in perpetuity, so to speak. And it has the option to construct whatever portion of the project, whatever phase, you know, that is CEQA.
Thank you. Any, any hand raised? Any email? No. Then, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, absolutely. I do have a question because I'm not feeling comfortable yet with the answer. You asked if the, whatever triggered that $170,000 change order with the engineering firm was to design that new structure to make them be all the way ADA with the transition. I think that's what you were talking about when you asked, was that included? In, because that does impact the project, it just, the change order alone is 170,000. I understand CEQA to some degree is about a baseline of a negative impact or substantial impact, right? And I don't know how big that structure is, so I guess the question is still out there. To your knowledge, was that included?
So the CEQA document that was circulated included the full product, including the ADA ramp.
Okay.
It was.
Okay.
And the city, if they so choose, can elect to build that specific feature if they need to, for, you know, financial reasons, at a future date, once they receive their may hold, you know, however, this will be. And so that, that's what happened. So from the CEQA perspective, the city has fully evaluated all elements of the project that might be built constructed this year or some future year. You have that flexibility, but we evaluated the whole of the project. CEQA rounds on piecemealing, so that's just the standard practice.
Thank you. That's fine, okay. Are there any other questions? Then I will ask for, when asking for a motion to approve resolution number 1597-2024, adopting mitigating negative declaration and adopting the mitigating, monitoring, monitoring, and reporting. Their motion. Their motion. We have a motion, is there a second?
One second.
We have a motion as a second. You vote. Mayor Protim?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Motion carries five, zero. Now we move on to the second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance number 401-2024, establishing residential rental housing inspection regulations in Title VIII as Chapter 8.40 of the Real Del Municipal Code Program. Page eighty-seven in our packet.
Thank you, Mayor Garndes, members of the council. So we do have Kevin Caldwell on the line. Should we move this side forward?
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor Garndes, members of the council. Yeah, if I may, the first point I'd like to bring to the council's attention. If we can, I would encourage everybody to speak into the microphones, including the members of the public. It is difficult to hear over the computer and over my phone. So I would certainly encourage that. As Mayor Garndes indicated, this would be the second reading consideration of ordinance number 401-2024, which would establish rental housing inspection programs within the city. This is brought to the city's attention again as discussed at your meeting on January 2nd. Based on the Cal OES inspectors that came to town after the earthquake, who indicated that they observed a large, not large, but a number of substandard housing units in the city. As a reminder, the city actually considered a rental housing inspection ordinance back in 2011, 2012. At that time, there was concern regarding the cost that we passed on to the tenants. At that time, the city was looking at approximately $150 a year per unit. At this point, we've actually whittled down the cost to roughly $2.78 a month for city inspected properties and $3.75 a month for self-certification properties. Again, we talked about the inspection checklist at the last meeting. We talked a little bit about the history, the fact that we brought this to the nuisance committee. The nuisance committee recommended that we revisit the rental housing inspection program, which we did. And then we took the, after working with the nuisance committee, I believe it was at least three meetings on fine tuning the ordinance. We took it to the planning commission at their meeting of November 28th. Both the nuisance committee and the planning commission unanimously recommend that your council approve this ordinance, which would implement this rental housing inspection program. Again, we believe it's a win-win for not only the tenants, the landlords, the neighbors, but it's the city as a whole. And for those reasons, we're recommending that your council adopt ordinance number 401-2224. What we propose is a slow rollout, basically registration through 2024, and then actually starting or commencing inspections in January of 2025. Again, based on the numbers that we have, roughly 640 units in towns, the city would be responsible for roughly 465. And then the volunteer fire department would be responsible for inspecting those other ones, which contain three units or more. In a nutshell, that's the recommendation of staff, the nuisance committee, and the planning commission. If your commissioner or any members of the public have any questions, I would certainly be more than happy to try to answer those questions. Again, if not, we would recommend that you adopt ordinance number 401-2224, 2024, establishing the rental housing inspection guidelines or regulations in Title VIII of the Real Del Municipal Code. Again, I'm more than happy to answer any questions your council or members of the public may have.
Thank you. And the Director Caldwell. Any questions? Councilmember Wilson?
When, if this is approved, will there, will we send out a, like to the tenants, the inspection sheet that we have? I don't know if we need to sort the whole ordinance out, but would that inspection sheet go out? So that, I know I had one person ask me about, they want to know what's going to be needed, what's supposed to be required, so they can get hands up to do that.
Yeah, so I'll jump in and answer the question, Kevin. So we, the idea is to have this kind of year-long rollout period where we are providing that information, but also the landlords and the tenants and getting them, you know, signed up and registered for the actual inspections next year. So there would be twelve months or so to do the rollout and make sure that those folks are informed.
Would we put that in like a new, like in?
Absolutely.
Like a regular newsletter, so people are at least aware of this.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. That's my one.
Councilmember Orr.
Oh, boy. Under the purpose of the regulation under number four, it says that the complaint initiated enforcement actions are sufficient to provide the essential level of abatement of substandard housing conditions needed by this community. Why would we need another one? Michael?
That would actually be up to the city council. Unfortunately, not a lot of tenants would actually complain about their living conditions, rental conditions, because their fear of retribution. And it is a legitimate fear. I mean, I have actually been to a number of properties where the tenants don't want to complain because they are concerned about the possible or potential retribution from their landlord. And it's, again, it is a legitimate concern. But that is up to the council.
Okay. And as far as fear of retribution, that's covered under the California Rental Code, but that is highly against the law and punishable. So again.
Yes, it is.
Why do we need a second statement?
Yeah. The problem is that you've got to have the money to fight the landlord. And there are some pro bono legal services, legal services of Northern California. It is very difficult. In fact, one of our former nuisance committee members, who had to go through this process, told us how difficult it was to go through the process and to actually ultimately get the situation resolved. Again, it's up to the council. Should they choose to pursue this, we will certainly implement it. Should you choose not to pursue this, it would die here tonight.
Okay. When you said California, you went through and found many of the dwellings to be substandard. Did they say how many were rentals versus how many were owner occupied?
They did not, but they did when they were actually able to make contact with the occupants of the dwelling units. One of the questions that we asked, including myself and the other local inspectors, was are you a tenant or are you a property owner? And the majority of the issues came with the tenant properties. As you would assume, most property owners take care of their properties.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out why it's renters specific and not just all properties. Under 8.40.040, why is it only imperative to establish enforceable standards only for renters? Again, why not for normal homeowners? I mean, you're assuming that they take care of their home better than renters, but that is not necessarily the case in all instances.
And that too is an option for the city council. Should your city council decide to apply this to homeowner properties, we would have to modify the ordinance somewhat and bring it back to you. But right now, based on what we've heard from folks, including Cal OES inspectors and former tenants, is that it's the concern that really appears to affect more of the rental properties than the private properties that are owner occupied, which I think is pretty reasonable to understand.
So we're saying that renters require more governmental intervention on owners?
I wouldn't say that. I would say that the property owners or the landlords or the property managers sometimes lose sight of exactly what's going on. There is such a high demand for rental properties in Humboldt County that sometimes I believe landlords and property managers can neglect sometimes common maintenance issues. I mean, I heard a story today that there was a property, a renter, who basically had to wash their dishes in their bathroom sink because the landlord for months would not basically fix the kitchen sink that was broken. And this isn't an end all to fix all. It's just a stepping stone to help the community, to help the landlords, to help the tenants, to help the neighbors, hopefully improve our housing stock and make Real Del a better place to live, where people want to come and live, where they can be assured that there is some sort of standard set for housing opportunities. And again, this is totally up to the council.
Yeah, I'm just, questions I have. So going through the checklist that was with last meeting's notes, it's a very subjective list as to what's wrong with the property. And there's no established criteria for what makes the property livable or non-livable. How do we address that?
Actually, it's not subjective. All of those actually come out of existing codes or regulations. If you look at the list, I know it's not included in this packet, but in the last packet, it actually referenced the International Property Maintenance Code, the California Fire Code, the Health and Safety Code, the Real Del Municipal Code, Uniform Housing Code, the California Building Code. Those are all prescriptive code requirements on the book now. So there is no subjectivity to those. They either comply with the code or they don't.
So when we're looking at balconies should be in good condition? I got third years.
Absolutely. What that brings me to is the balcony that collapsed at the University of California, Berkeley, some eight, 10 years ago. That was in substandard condition and a number of people, actually, a few people died and a number of people were injured. So you want your balconies, your guardrails to be in good condition. You don't want them to be in a state of disrepair where they could actually fail and cause bodily injury to somebody.
Right. If I remember correctly, though, that was a matter of too many people on the balcony, not necessarily the landowner's issue.
Too many people and the fact that the joists themselves, the floor joists, were actually rotted at some point.
But still too many people.
As I remember. I could be wrong.
So it says, or we're still back under forty. California rental laws already call for a pre-rental inspection. So our inspection is the same as the California one? We're just going to charge for it?
Well, we're actually going to verify it, actually. It's a third-party verification is what we do. Basically, we're kind of an omsudsman between the tenant and the landlord.
But they have five years of self-inspection to kind of pull the wool over our eyes?
I'm sorry, I missed that last part.
I said they have five years of self-inspection before the city has to go in there? To where they can just fake it till they make it or?
Yeah. Yeah, once every five years. And again, the tenants actually have to attest to that self-certification, that they in fact agree to the conclusions that that property manager or that landlord or that property owner is reporting to the city.
Right. But you yourself said the tenant was afraid of retribution, right?
Many tenants are, correct.
So they attest to it just so they don't get kicked out of their place? Probably.
It's possible. You know, it's hard to say. It's hard for me to put myself in somebody else's shoes.
All right. 8.40, 8.150, explain the necessity for a director of this program, i.e. a housing director or community development director, to be granted the powers of a law enforcement officer?
You know, that's actually already, that's actually already codified under the building code and the uniform housing code. We are an officer of the city to inspect for compliance with California codes and local codes.
Okay, so we don't need another thing to let you know that?
It's up to your council, whether you need another layer of oversight or not. Again, the reason we brought this to the council was based on comments from our out-of-town Cal OES inspectors.
Okay. And I'm just, like I said, asking questions. So there's also a segment in there where it says that the city will go to the fullest extent to recoup expenses for abatements, notices, legal action. Are we talking about kicking people out of their homes and taking their homes under the guise of our rental inspection program?
Only if it's an immediate health and safety issue. We currently, under state law and under current municipal code standards, have that authority. In fact, I believe at your last city council meeting, your council approved, it was two or other, maybe three abatements or liens that were placed on properties to clean those properties up.
Right. And we didn't need a rental inspection regulation to do it, right?
Absolutely not.
All right. At 8.40.17, language would indicate that inspections can be made at will versus the yearly inspection defined earlier. So earlier it was a yearly inspection. In the layout, it says that they can be done at will.
Yeah. So if we get a complaint from either a landlord or a tenant that says, hey, we would like to have an inspection done, they could arrange to have that done, just like they can right now, actually. We have a life safety inspection program and it's a $75 fee currently. So if we get a request from a property owner that says, hey, I'm concerned about my tenant who seems to be trashing my property. I haven't been in there in quite a long time. I would like to arrange for an inspection for it. And we would do that once they make application and pay the $75 life safety inspection fee.
Okay. But it doesn't say that, it says at will.
That is at will. That means somebody requested.
It doesn't say when somebody requested.
We're only going to do the request of somebody. We're not going to go knock on somebody's house and say, we want to look at your house because we think so-and-so is going on. It's only just reported to us.
Okay. I think that needs to be made clear then, because later it says that, where was it? And they've done landlords are required to pay, I don't know. Basically saying that they can prevent further violations? So you're looking at the inspection sheet, driving along, seeing somebody who doesn't have street numbers, or you can see their garbage cans? That gives you the at-will to go and inspect their home?
On the inside, absolutely not. You would need an inspection warrant for that. And for a judge to grant an inspection warrant, the judge would have to find that there's an immediate health, safety, life issue involved with that.
At which time, the director who has the powers of law enforcement could go in and do that?
If we wanted to pursue an inspection warrant, if we had evidence that there was some sort of life safety issue within that house, and we have that power right now, with or without this rental housing inspection ordinance.
All right. I think this is the last one. But so we know there's a housing crisis in Humboldt County. We know that there's a lot of rental units out there that need a lot of work. So you have these landlords that instead of facing all these fines and abatements, are going to take their house off the market? Or you go in and deem property unfit and have it? Where do these people go? And I know there are laws that say that they have to pay two months' worth of their rent for relocation and all of that. But I mean, if they can't afford to keep their place up in the first place, what are we going to do to the people that are suddenly on the streets in Real Del?
Are you talking about the landlords not being able to afford to make life safety improvements?
Either that or if you kick the renters out, which avoids their lease, which number one allows the landlord to raise the rent beyond what California allows on a yearly basis, and number two forces the landlord to pay relocation fees, or three, just pulls the house off the market in general and there's one less house for people to live in.
They could do that right now. They can convert those houses to vacation rentals, which has actually been a very popular thing for a number of landlords to do because they actually get to come in and inspect the property every three or four or five days after those vacation rentals live. But as you indicated, there was such a huge demand for rental housing in Humboldt County that it would behoove any landlord to make those improvements to make the house a standard, not a substandard house, and rent it out.
Unless the cost is prohibitive, and then they just pull it off the market and somebody's looking for a place to live.
And I think that would be a rare and extreme case. I mean, I very, I find it very difficult to believe that somebody would actually not make those improvements based on what I consider a cash cow. I mean, rentals in Humboldt County are cash cows.
You don't live in Real Del, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay. That was it for me. Thanks.
Mayor Protim Carter?
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful. Yeah, I don't have any questions per se, but I do want to speak on the issue. I want to first say that the reason I don't have any questions is because I didn't just hear about this. is because I didn't just hear about this yesterday or at the last meeting. Um, I personally and many members of the council have spent many, many months and months researching this matter. Um, that means I've been over and over and over the ordinance multiple times looking at the exact wording. I've been in City Hall. I've been in Kevin's office and Kyle's office asking these questions so that I know, you know, exactly what, what's going on. Um, that also means that I've talked to a lot of other people from other jurisdictions, both inside and outside of Humboldt County. Um, a lot of cities in the state of California have something like this, as does Eureka and I think, or Arcade. And I think Eureka is either working on it or they've already passed one. These are very common things. Rio Del is not the only one or the first one who's considering this. If anything, we're a little bit late to the game. Um, next, I, I want to put it out there that the city is not profiting from this program in any way that it, we're not lining our pockets to, you know, put these funds towards other things or to, you know, fund our exorbitant lifestyles that we have as council members or city staff. Um, the money that comes from these fees, which are pretty low, will simply fund the program and they're, like as Kevin said, not that crazy. Um, I want to make it really clear that from my perspective, this is not an eviction tool and this is not a punishment for landlords or for renters. Um, the reasons that we have, you know, I, I wish we didn't have to do this. I wish that we said, oh no, all our rentals are in wonderful condition and somebody is taking care of them and we can trust that our maybe lower income or maybe not, whatever reason renters have a safe and equitable place to live and a fair shot at having a happy lifestyle. Um, the earthquake brought to life that that is not necessarily the case. I see this as a means to offer protection to renters who maybe aren't in a position to buy their own homes right now. I've heard countless stories from renters who have been complaining about broken windows, about awnings that are falling down, about back porches that have bit massive holes in them, and nobody will listen to them. And they don't actually have the money to make repairs to these houses that they don't even own, simply because they're being ignored by either the landlord or the property management. These are the people we need to be caring about and these are people we need to protect. Once again, I wish that everybody was on the up and up and the city didn't need to step in, but we do, and that has become apparent to me over quite some time. The city is also not telling anybody that they need to go out and raise their rent. All we are saying is that low income people and that renters and every single person who lives in this city has the right to a safe home. To, to somewhere that doesn't have broken windows, to somewhere that isn't covered in mold. People should feel safe and be able to call it a home, whether they own it or not. Um, and I myself have lived in many different rentals and had, I, I could go on and on and on. I won't. But, um, I think that those of us who were actually out on the streets after this earthquake and like saw people crying and so, so devastated, um, that they lost a house and that they were now, I mean, if you want to talk about people on the streets, we, we still have people displaced from their homes and a lot of those people are renters and that's all been covered. Um, but those are the, the things I experienced and that I saw with my own eyes, big boots on the ground after a natural disaster struck our town, that I will never, ever forget. And that's why I feel like this is something that actually does need to be considered. Um, and as far as applying it to homeowners too, I think that we, we have a nuisance advisory committee. When a, a home falls into complete squalor, even if it is a homeowner or owner occupied situation, we go in there. We don't necessarily bang down their door and look at everything, but they get a letter. They say, hey, you got to clean it up. Hey, we've had complaints of rats. Hey, your windows don't work, things like that. So it's not like we're only targeting renters because renters are bad. We have other systems in place that help protect homeowners and we're trying to do the same for, for these renters. Um, the last thing I'm going to say is something I said last week. With the state laws about housing and this push towards housing and, um, Rio Del just being geographically located where it is, we don't have a ton of room to build new housing. We, it is very, very important that we protect the housing stock that we already have so that we make sure we stay in compliance with these laws. Um, so in summation, yeah, I wish in an ideal world that we didn't have to do something like this, but based on what I've seen with my own eyes and heard with my own ears, being a member of this community for quite some time and an elected official for almost four years now, this is unfortunately necessary for us to consider something like this. So that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Fortem. Me? Uh, yes. Okay. I found whoever. Oh, okay. I don't have, I firmly believe in this program and I've lived here for a long time and I've been on the council for 24 years. Um, geez. And we, we tried this once before and I think even once before, the one that Kevin's talking about. You remember that one, when Rich Hiller Ducci?
Yeah, that was probably in the nineties.
Yeah, in the nineties. And it didn't fall. At then we had a lot more, and I hate to say it, but slum lords. And, um, it was pretty bad and it didn't go through. I think we, we didn't look at it close enough and it was too restrictive and it was asking for more money and it didn't pass. And there's not as many now, but everybody has a right to live. It says here, to eliminate the nuisance, it is imperative to establish enforceable minimum standards to residential buildings. Now, if the owner, the owners of these properties should have to keep them to a minimal health and safety standard. I mean, I mean, they should go in and paint and redecorate, but people have a right, little kids have a right to live in a safe and healthy home. And, um, a lot of times I feel like the owners are taking advantage of that. Um, they can charge what they want and then somebody will pay it or can afford it. They, they don't have to fix up the places because then they can just rent it, rent it out at a low price, but they're not safe and healthy. And, and I've been in homes and I think one of the first times we brought this up, it was my idea, but back then there were some really bad, bad homes, but there still are. But, um, I was the one that was telling Kevin about the family that for a long time had used their kitchen sink and bathroom to do their loads of wash and, um, dishes. And then there's been houses that have been black mold with terrible black mold in them that they couldn't get fixed. They had to move just for the black, black mold and their health. And, um, I, and this program I feel is, we're starting out very lightly. I mean, we're not going to do it and well, we're going to register the people, but not start until next year. And, um, I think it should be able to work out some of the problems. And I would bet that most of the redholds, um, would have no problem passing. But we do have problems with some, and I just think this is a good program. And I'm for having that.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodall. And, um, I am too in support of this. Um, I, I've had a rental, I had renters who called up, whatever they would call up, we would do whatever we could as soon as we, as soon as we were, tell them to deal with it and just send us the bill. But at the same time, there was a porch issue that I hadn't been over to see and there was some wind rot on the porch and it was unsafe. And during inspections, Kevin pointed it out to me. And, um, I needed to know that because that was a safety issue for my renter. Regardless of, of my ability to redo the porch or not, I could have done something had I been paying attention and clearly, you know, because I definitely wasn't a slum lord. We did everything they asked us to do, but you can miss things. You don't do it intentionally. You're not trying all the time to just be negligent, but there are times when you miss something. So being able to point these things out, I think that for the health and safety, I think is good. I think it's important. And I do believe that renters, landlords rather, don't always step up and do what they need to do for whatever reason. Not necessarily because they don't want to. They might not have the finances, whatever. But it is important to protect the people who need protecting. And, uh, you know, a homeowner can do, if, if you want to live in your broken down home, as a homeowner, that's you on you. That's your responsibility. That's your life. That's your choice. But a renter does not have that same opportunity to say, well, I want to live with this broken down thing. No, I don't, but no one will fix it. So doing inspections, it isn't, it isn't as a punishment. It is just looking out for the health and safety. I agree with everything, um, uh, Mayor Fortem Carter said and, uh, Councilmember Woodall, that looking out for vulnerable people is part of what we're supposed to be doing. And so, you know, there's, during the earthquake, after the earthquake rather, a lot of people were displaced because of a, a water heater wasn't strapped. That could be taken care of. And that's a simple thing. That's not a, oh, you got to move out. We're evicting you because we need a water heater strapped. It's just like, you need a water heater strapped and you do it. And that is just that little thing could have saved some people from having to be displaced. So I, I fully support this and, um, I, I hope people do understand that we are not trying to be bad cops or bad people. We are just trying to look out for vulnerable people who need assistance and sometimes are not able to get it. Um, so is there?
A bad.
Yeah, no.
I'll take it really quickly. Um, there seems to be a misconception floating around from the other council members that I want people to live in squalor. Um, however, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying we already have these tools in our toolbox. The state has given us these tools and we're not using them obviously because there's still houses out there. I'm not trying to kick these people out. I want them to have a nice, safe place to live. But we're looking at, um, forcing homeowners into making repairs that they A, don't want to do, B, don't care about doing, or, uh, C, can't afford to do. These people are going to be washing their dishes in the river, not in the bathroom sink. So, um, these are the people we're talking about displacing. Not because I want them to live in squalor or have black mold in their lungs or anything like that, but we're going to force people into a situation where the landowner is going to pull the house or they're going to raise the rent. And we're talking about how homeowners have the option to live in squalor if they want to. Renters have the option to move if they want to. And I'm not saying they have to. I swear to you now, I am behind everybody who wants to live in a nice, safe place. I have enough kids of my own. Um, I do not want them hurt or living in a poor place, Mayor Fortem. Um, I'm not implying that people deserve to live in a place like that. I'm just saying that if the nuisance committee is going out and hitting all the, the owner homes and keeping them in the condition that they want, what's the difference between a rental and an owned home? Okay. Why do we need a special regulation that says rentals are going to get this special inspection? Everybody else, you're fine. The nuisance committee can take care of you. And we already have these tools in the state of California. We already have these laws to protect renters. And yes, they may fear retribution, but there, I went on and searched for rental law. 16 lawyers popped up that wanted to help me get out of my lease or get money back from my landlord. I wasn't asking that. They just popped up. So telling me that it's hard to find somebody to sue your landlord if you're living in a, a poor condition and you're afraid of being, or afraid of retribution, come on, there's enough lawyers out there that want to make money.
Also you?
Huh?
I mean, who's going to pay for the lawyer if you're a very poor tenant or an elderly woman that has no income other than her social security?
There are many lawyers out there willing to take on these cases for what they're going to get back from the landlord. And I understand social security, I live on disability. Okay. So I'm not making a mint out there either, but I also don't think we need to pay another fee to the city. And I'm not, I was not saying, um, that the city is lining their pockets. I just don't understand why we need another thing to pay when we already have these tools at our disposal to take care of this.
Doesn't this bring them all together in one ordinance so that it helps us?
They're already in one ordinance. It's just now we're making people pay more.
Different ordinance.
It's the same ordinance from the state of California. We're just making it a Rio Del ordinance so that we can charge.
I, I disagree, but that's fine.
I, I'd actually like to speak to that a little bit, just if you're done, Councilmember Orr.
Uh, I'm not actually.
Okay.
Um, and when we're talking about boots on the ground after the earthquake and all that, I think we've been hearing it for a year. All of us were out there. We all know what happened. We all seen the destruction. Um, and as far as, sorry, I'm getting heated now. Um, as far as, um, anyway, I lost that one. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, the nuisance committee is a committee I've sat on actually since before I got elected to office. So it's been, um, probably about five or six years. Um, and it, it isn't possible, actually, okay. One of the things we actually run into a lot is, uh, homeowners who live out of the area and so they never see their rentals. And, um, that's where the nuisance committee has to step in and it can be extremely overwhelming and has been to our city staff, uh, primarily. So, um, an ordinance like this would actually help alleviate some of the burden that has been placed on, um, trying to get these rentals cleaned up. Um, I think that it's just too much as of now, from what I've seen over many years on the nuisance committee to handle it all at once. And an ordinance like this would really, really help. And again, as far as fees go, what is it? $2 a month or something? I mean, I know it's another fee and nobody wants to pay fees, but, um, in the past, when we've tried to pass something like this, it's been wildly expensive. And this isn't, I would not classify wildly expensive. Um, but I, I do highly recommend anybody in the public or whatever's out there who wants to come to the nuisance committee meetings, uh, for an extended period of time and get a little bit of a better idea about how this actually works in the city of Rio Del. You might have a little bit more of an understanding of why the nuisance committee isn't always enough to get some of this stuff done. And this is really just a supplemental way to help. And that's that.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
My couple of quick questions. One did, uh, this is probably for Kevin. Are all of the self, what do you call it? Self-inspection or whatever inspections, those are all done by the city the first time initially, aren't they?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So the first, the first time around, the city is going to go through and inspect all of the rentals and then, then it comes back to the self-inspection, which goes for another three years and then you have another city inspection or five years after, after the first initial one.
Correct. It's once every five years after the first initial one, assuming that there are no, um, tenants that actually challenge the information. And, and again, um, like I indicated earlier, the council member Orr, is we currently have a provision on the books that allow for a life safety inspection at the request of a property owner, at the request of a property manager, at the request of a tenant. Um, so that is available to them right now as well.
No, the, the other question was, uh, it's actually for the city manager, but how many rent tags do we have left in the city? I think you told us a million or two.
We're below nine. I don't have the current up to date number, uh, but, uh, Kevin, you have a guesstimate on that? For, you're talking about the earthquake.
I believe.
You have rent tags. Before we had like close to one.
Yeah, I, I believe. I, I believe it's closer to six dwellings right now.
Okay. I, I thought it had gone down to substantial, but I didn't want to misquote that to somebody else. Those are my allegations.
Yeah, they're actually, there have actually been a couple that have been cleared up the last, uh, two or three weeks.
Yeah.
And then there are three. Uh, I'm sorry. There are three that are queued up under the CDBG process, CDBG loan, owner occupied process, that hopefully will get started here real soon. And we'll take that number down to, uh, to three-ish or so.
Did we let any of the houses go back to the bank or did any of the rent tags go back to the bank? Do you know of any of the residences?
I, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Did any of the rent tag houses go back to the bank or the owner walked away?
There's, uh, there's only, only one and, um, that's the one on Painter Street. I believe it's for Painter. And the, the bank actually decided to take that one back from the property owners. And the, the bank actually decided to take that one back from the property owners. And that's the only one I know of.
All right, thank you.
I get one clarification there.
Okay, this is the last clarification, then we're going to go to the public right after this clarification.
Councilmember Wilson asked if all of the houses were going to be inspected by the city first, prior to being self-inspected. On the meeting of the second, you said that that wasn't possible, that you'd do a third of them at a time over the next few years?
Yeah, we actually will, will roll it out. We expect actually a three-year process, but we're hoping the initial process is going to be a city inspection process. And we're going to try to identify those upfront.
So all of the houses?
I'm sorry.
So all of the rentals will be inspected by a city inspector prior to being able to be self-inspected?
Correct, that, that is the language in the ordinance.
Okay, I was just curious, because the minutes from last week said that it would take three years to roll it out? Or from last meeting?
Yeah, we do anticipate it'll take three years. It'll probably be less than that, to be honest with you. But we're, we're trying to actually be on the more conservative side.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Members of the public, any questions? Please?
Thank you, sorry. Tom Norton is my name. So I have a, I mean, you guys talk a lot, so. I, I understand where you guys are coming from, where with, you know, people paying for what they get. I do understand that people do have a choice. If, if they want to live in squalor, they have a choice to live there. If they don't, they can move out. You said that it's, one of you guys said that it's renters are scared about saying something or they're going to get charged. And I, I've dealt with them personally, that that does happen. But I also do understand in California, they have more rights than I do. If they decide that if they don't like something that is broken in their house and they don't tell me and they decide that they don't want to pay rent, they can take me through a long, lengthy process, cost me a lot of money out of my pocket. And they, California is, is designed for the rent. They have so many safeguards that I don't understand why we would need one more extra safeguard for, and to be charged. There is certain, there is a few rentals that I have that I only make $50 a month on top of it. So that $50 a month, if you take it for one, one year, that's $600. That $600, what is one hot water heater costing me? $1,800 to have it replaced. So now, if you guys go in there and decide that you see something that I, you feel like I need to have fixed and it needs to be done with a permit, then I have to pay you guys a permit fee. So then, then it's, I feel like it's government overreach. You guys are opening the door for something bigger and more. So I understand where you guys are coming from. I strongly support it in some sense, but I know, I feel like there could be, there is other programs and there's other stuff that can be done before even doing this. And I also, while I'm up here, is you guys are focusing on these rentals, charging rentals. What are you guys doing about the Main Street? We have no businesses here. Nobody ever talks about that. The last I just heard was the motorcycle clubs coming into the pizza factory. What do we need a motorcycle club here? We, on Monday?
It can make, I'm sorry. So, Kevin, speaking of off-topic, so, not on the, I can't let you?
Yeah, no, I understand.
I'm sorry, I got you there.
That's all I have to say. So I do understand where, where it's coming from or where it's coming. I definitely, I, I don't like slum lords. I wish everybody could clean up around here. And I feel that if you're going to pay for someplace, you definitely need to have a safe and get what you're paying for. And, but I feel like there's a different way of going about this one time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I just want to remind, I, I just wanted to remind Mr. Norton, I, I think he said $50 a month. We're looking at $2.75, I believe, and $3.75 a month. So you're actually looking at a, a, a much lesser cost than $50 a month. And I do want to commend Mr. Norton as a landlord. He has done some very good things with his rental properties. He is somebody who should be considered a model landlord in our city of Rio Del, and he should be commended.
I appreciate that. And I wasn't meaning the $50, the $50 is, I have some properties here in Rio Del that I only make $50 on top of the rent. That's what my profit is, $50 per month. And then you take that, I make on one property, I, I look for the equity instead of the actual what I make per door. So $600 in a year, but I do make the equity, so that's one time.
Thank you.
Hi, hello. My name is Stacy Nowley. I'm a property manager for some rentals here in town. And I have definitely am a problem with this. I agree with a lot of what you guys are saying. Everybody has the right to live in a safe environment, 100% agree. However, it's been said over and over by everybody up here that there's other processes already in place that would take care of that. And nobody has mentioned that California tenant law says, you're example of the people with the same. They, if what they tell the landlord and they don't fix it, they can withhold that amount. They can fix it and withhold that from that most rent. They can get fixed, they don't have to keep living like that. There's all sorts of tenant law protections like that. So a once-a-year inspection done by the city might not even catch that anyway, because that thing might be working at the time you go in there. It's not going to solve the inspection problem. And it also says on here, it's recognized that the majority of rental housing property owners comply with the state housing law and applicable or missing. Only a relatively small percentage violate these laws. Yet you're asking every landlord in the city to pay to have these inspections done, even when you're admitting right here, there's only a few that are not keeping their progress far. That's not fair in any sense of the word. And a couple of other things that I have here. Mr. Orr brought it earlier. It says on here that the director has the right to enter a property to prevent a violation. That seems like an overreach. How do you know that there's a violation? How do you prevent a violation? You're just assuming that there's something going on in that property. And it also says on here, and I wasn't here at the last meeting, so something has changed, but what you, what you had online, it says on section 8.40.300, the rental housing code compliance fee is annually on July 1st. And then there's also a rental housing annual registration fee due on January 1st for every property. And then down lower, each unit shall be subject to an inspection fee. So you're asking for three different fees every single year for every property that somebody manages in the city, whether they're in 100% great shape or whether they need to be torn down. And that's the unfairness of it. You already have a nuisance committee. I hear the pro tem saying that they're overworked. Well, that's not landowners' problem. That's not the problem of all of these landlords that keep their units safe and clean and above bar. That's not our responsibility to deal and pay for the nuisance properties out there. So I believe that's a problem that the city manager and the finance director, and you as a city council, need to come up with a solution where you're taking care of those properties that are the nuisances. That's why you have a whole nuisance committee, correct? That's all I have to say.
What, what were the three charges each year? You said there was three fees annually?
There's three fees annually, it's on page 117. And there's no fees listed in here what they actually are. So you, I hear you talking about what you're estimating them to be. And again, you keep saying they're low. If they're so low, you should be able to incorporate that into your budget to just give these things back and not pass them on to the homeowners. It says there are a code compliance fee, an annual housing registration fee, and then?
Kevin, can you speak to that? That's accurate, not accurate?
You know, I actually don't have that right in front of me, but I know that the, the, there is an annual registration fee. And I believe the annual registration fee was, I want to say $15 per property. Yeah, and that's, that's again, a recommendation. It's based on a calculation we used on the amount of time that we would expect staff to spend on that as council and hopefully the communities where city organizations, county organizations, public agencies can't charge any more than the cost of providing services. And the, the fees are actually adopted by resolution and not by ordinance. So that will actually come to your, should your council choose to adopt this ordinance, that would come to your council via resolution. The only other fee that I'm aware of are the inspection fees, the city inspection fee, and then the self-certification inspection fee. I'm not sure what that third fee is. Again, I apologize, I don't, I don't have everything in front of me right here.
You only pay the inspection fee when you're inspected, is that correct?
Correct.
And the city can do inspections at will, so you could be charged at several times in a year?
Self-inspection is actually more.
But would you?
Yeah.
Kevin, could you correct me if I'm wrong? The, the at-will, the legal term, the, the at-will portion of that statement or written phrase, does, does this actually, are we actually saying if there is a complaint, the city has the right to versus it's Tuesday morning and we just want to go do it and at will, we will go and do it? Explain that?
No, we, we, we do not do surprise inspections. All of our inspections, including our current complaint system, nuisance committee system, is really based on complaints that are filed. We are reactive in that aspect and not proactive. The only thing we would be doing here is, you know, basically, once every, every three years, the city would do an inspection, city inspections. And then once every five years, for those that are self-certifying after the initial inspection, we would go out there. But we're not going to drive by somebody's house and just decide, well, I'm going to go knock on their door and ask for an inspection. There is a process, I mentioned it earlier, it's an inspection warrant. And those are very rare, they have to be immediate life safety issues. And those are actually allowed currently under state law, including the California Building Code, including the International Property Maintenance Code, the Health and Safety Code. But we would certainly not be driving down the street and look at somebody's house and said, all right, we're going to go do this. What we do as far as our current nuisance provisions, our community service officer, if we get a complaint, we write a letter to the property owner, the property manager, the tenant, and say we've received a complaint about this. This is basically a courtesy letter. We're asking you to either confirm or deny that this situation exists.
Question. Sure, thank you. Kevin, it says 8.40.170, what you just spoke to. It says the director has the authority to enter and inspect any dwelling or premises whenever necessary to secure compliance with or prevent a violation of any provision of this chapter. That sounds to me like if you are worried about something happening in that home, you can go. It doesn't say if there's been a complaint. It doesn't say if there's, it doesn't say anything. It doesn't even say if you drive by and you notice something, it says whenever.
What, number two?
Number one, 84017.
It's on page 117.
And then further says that if you are refused entry by the occupant, you may obtain an inspection warrant pursuant to the provision. So if you think something's happening there and we won't let you in, then you'll go get a warrant. That's the way it's worded.
Well, yeah, the only reason we would think something is occurring is if we get a report. I mean, I'm not going to drive by and through osmosis think something is occurring within a house or a community services officer thinking, I think that as well. I mean, we could take this to the extreme on every issue if we want to, but we utilize common sense when we implement any organ, or any ordinance within the city.
It's been my experience that common sense in government don't work well together. And that if it's not worded in there or the, the exact nature of what's going on is not worded in there, then there's a whole lot of room to play with. Yeah.
So anyway, my, my point was, you're saying that these are minimal. So I believe that's, that's your guys' job to figure out how to pay for them yourself if you want to type things done and that those costs should not be passed on to every person who happens to own a property that they rent out in the city. That's stupid, unfair to pass every landlord for the very few, which you write, write in here. It's a very minimal number of people that actually don't follow the laws and keep their units up. So that's not fair to pass those costs on to those that do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, when I was researching this at one point a long time ago, there are multitudes of cities that have these inspection programs, isn't there? I mean, we're not creating the, the?
Oh, absolutely not, no. These, no, these are very common now in the state of California. In fact, in multiple states. Throughout the country, rental housing inspection ordinances are common. We're certainly not breaking any new ground here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so. Anyone else have any questions?
I guess off the month?
Go on then.
I'm Stacy Hansen. I'm a property owner and I own a rental unit. And I won't be renting it out. It currently is already not being rented out because as a property owner of a rental, it's kind of scary, you don't have a lot of rights. And if you guys are going to tack more things on, it will stay empty. So it is one less house in Rio Del for a family to use. We take good care of it, we're not slum lords. But I'm not going to have the government come in and overreaching to us. I definitely would want the wording way more precise, like nothing left open, because I do think that that, the wording in there could come out and open, it'd be like a can of worms. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we did receive one email. It is, I'm writing regarding the proposed rental housing regulations. I've owned numerous rentals in Rio Del over the years and have nothing but problems with my renters maintaining my properties. I've spent thousands of dollars on repairs and disposing of trash and other items left behind. I have one rental where the entire garage is filled with garbage. I have sold all my rentals due to renters trashing my places. The last rental I sold sat vacant for almost three years. Because of the damage, I had to sell the property at a reduced price. I support rental housing inspections mandated by the city, provided the cost is reasonable. I believe it will not only benefit the renters who rent from slum lords, but will also benefit responsible owners who unknowingly rent to folks who do not take care of the properties. I also encourage the city to step up code enforcement activities in the city on all properties. I see front yards littered with debris, vehicles, trailers, overflowing garbage cans, et cetera. I grew up in Rio Del and I don't remember so many properties not being maintained and so many vehicles parked in the wrong direction and the number of traders parked on the streets. Unfortunately, the city has a reputation for poor housing conditions and poorly maintained properties. Hopefully, the proposed rental housing regulations and increased code enforcement will help the city improve its image. It's respectfully submitted to an email.
Thank you. And have for?
Can I add one more thing? Should I pop in? And it is all, it is also California state law that all landlords have the right to inspect their properties every six months, every year, however often they want to. So if the landlords are not doing that and going in and seeing if their properties are being trashed or seeing if people are hoarding in there, well, that's that owner's responsibility again. It's no reason to enforce more laws on the people that are abiding by what they should be abiding by.
Thank you. Any more? Question, I think, no? So is there a motion to approve the second reading?
I'll make that motion from afar.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second, we have a motion to the second. Please vote.
And I'm voting yes.
Motion, when motion carries for one? Now we will move on to the first reading introduction by Kyle Longley of ordinance number four zero two two zero two four related to false alarms and fees, page one twenty in our package.
Thank you, Mayor Gar, Senator Cusler, Council. I'll go ahead and turn this over to our Chief of Police. Thank you, Gooding, Mayor Gar, and the city council members, and members of the public. I was gonna add the competition first, right? Unfortunately, here we go. So, ordinance four zero two dash two zero two four, when established, um, false alarms and fees, uh, Riedel, this department is tasked to responding to commercial and residential alarms. Uh, alarm response along with vital response, part two, the most safety conscious responses that we have uh, based on the unknown. Uh, most of the times our officers are working by themselves, and when we have a, an alarm that requires two officers, definitely that we don't know. When you think about an alarm that tells you there's an alert, uh, possible danger of something is occurring, um, the resources that we utilize for recurring false alarms, links resources throughout the city. And so oftentimes, we're calling additional resources from outside agencies to come back and sub, uh, for these alarm calls. Um, after extensive researches, determined multiple allied agencies have really close to enforce, uh, false alarms and fees. Uh, we discussed this, uh, with the nuisance committee, and they, uh, supported and recommended the city council adopt the false alarms and fees. Uh, if adopted, this would start in January of twenty twenty five, and the fees would occur, uh, twenty dollars every two years. Uh, the first two years would be free. Um, and then when we talk about false alarms, we're talking about excessive alarms. So, uh, you would be given two free, basically, uh, false alarm calls, uh, before it's charged. Um, that third, uh, false alarm, like it comes in at seventy-five dollars, and it increases that we have multiple alarms. Um, we respond, when this came about, there's a lot of other, a lot of jurisdictions already have this, uh, voted by and they're there, uh, the useful codes. And we kept hearing that, uh, when we responded to these alarms, we kept saying billable, billable, billable as a disposition. But we found out that the Riedel didn't have that immunity code, so responding to all these false alarms was just by the bridge. We had no way to, uh, enforce, uh, somebody to fix their alarm. And it's been an ongoing issue with several, uh, businesses and residents, uh, in the city of Riedel. Um, some multiple times, and then, uh, even after telling them to get that thing fixed or let's figure out why that keeps happening and it continues to occur. Um, and so we are hoping this ordinance is approved. And, uh, we have that certain impressions.
The, um, fire department is looking into this, in terms of false alarms, so we're having the same problems.
Right.
So.
And, and just to say, um, and so we're not talking about, like I say, extreme weather and your alarm goes off, that's not a, a false alarm. We're talking about, uh, something where, um, malfunction of that alarm occurs or not managed, or accidentally you get the wrong code, and they'll call your alarm company, and we still respond to that. That's what we're talking about, like, false alarms.
Councilor Ward, I have a view. Um, it says permits for alarms, uh, shall be unlawful for any person to use install or cause to be installed in an alarm system on any premises within the city without first applying for and receiving an alarm permit. What kind of alarms are we talking? Are we talking about the Ring Camera alarms? Or are we talking about those that are professionally put in by?
Professionally put in, yeah.
There, that takes care of all my questions.
Um, Councilmember Wilson?
I don't see, um, you know, is, these are, these are ones that are done like advanced security.
Yes, yes. And just to, uh, address, uh, Councilman Ward's, the Ring Camera, basically, you're responsible for that. You can, that response comes to you and not to the police department. And so, somebody like security event or something like that, they go to, or to dispatch, it comes to us, and so we have to respond to that. That's where we're.
And that includes the rings that are set up to a central monitoring where they notify the police?
If, if it notifies us, it would.
It does.
Yeah, but we haven't had, I can't remember any of them from the warning.
Mayor Protem?
Uh, no questions at this time. I've already spoken to the chief about this pretty extensively, so I'm good.
Thank you. Um, members of the public? Any hands raised? Okay, then, um, is there a motion to accept the first reading?
Don't move.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second, a motion to the second. She carries, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
She carries five years. Now we'll come to council reports and communications. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Um, not too much. I have a redeck meeting on Monday. Um, I went to a school board meeting last week, and the best news is that their gym is no longer red tagged, and there were kids actively playing basketball in there when I showed up to the meeting. Um, so that is really great news. They still need repairs. Um, but there's a lot going on over there. I think they're gonna demo two buildings that have been red tagged in April or May. They're making way for new playground equipment. Um, lots of really, really good stuff going on over there, but the gym is in use, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Then, uh, Councilmember Ward?
Um, I have an HCOG meeting next week, um, but as far as gym use, I wanna mention that the, uh, Scotia Gym is opening soon, which at least I have a cutting back. They're super excited about because we get to play our games a little bit closer to home in our community instead of going up to the, um, Bear River side. Excited about that.
Councilmember Wilson?
Uh, just, just, the standard I have. Our, our CEA, I think, is next week, or next weekend or next, and then, uh, or whatever, and I just did H seven A, so. Nothing real major to report at least.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall, we spoke about the nuisance abatement committee quite a bit tonight. So we're having a meeting tomorrow at three o'clock, and people are welcome to come just to listen, or if you have a complaint, you can come also. That's all I got. And, um, I have a League of Cities meeting on Thursday and on Friday, and the, um, event on, on this past Saturday, the community coming together to commemorate or to remember the, um, earthquake. And that event was just, it was unbelievably well attended during a major rainstorm. Um, it was still well attended. Um, the, the Community Resource Center is just amazing. They did, um, a great job with the, a long-term recovery group and, um, um, Pay It Forward, Humboldt, and, you know, all the organizations that have been there. Um, uh, it, it was really, it was really impressive. The community really appreciated being there. The community really appreciates, um, what, uh, the Community Resource Center it has done and is continuing to do every day. We're very fortunate there. Uh, so, um, there's also, one of the things I'll point out there, and I wanna stress, is that there is a disaster preparedness academy on March second. You just need to go online and register, and, um, and we have flyers here. They have flyers down at the Community Resource Center. Uh, it's, uh, they're going to give out, um, first aid kits. They're going to give a disaster kit, um, disaster planning. They're gonna kinda go over how to plan for an emergency. Uh, paperwork that you can fill out for yourself, that, um, just a plan, an emergency response plan, a disaster preparedness plan. Um, uh, one of the, um, women at the Resource Center, Kim, she went to the one in, um, in Ferndale, and she said it was absolutely amazing. The amount of information they teach you about stop the leak, um, so, because during an earthquake, when things are flying about, a lot of times you could get impaled, something could be, you could get cut, so those are important things. So, it's March second. It's, uh, put on by Blue Lake, uh, Retoria, but it's here. It will, um, it'll be at the Fire Hall here on March second. It's an all-day class. Just have to sign up. And I think really it's worth it, and being prepared is, uh, we can't do anything else but be prepared. You can't stop the earthquake, so just everyone, anyone who can hear me and listening, anyone out here, think about signing up for that class because it will be worth, um, your time and, and trouble. So, that's all I, oh.
Um, where do you sign up? I'm trying to find this stat.
Oh, the flyers are here.
I'm pretty sure.
I know they're at the community center. Okay, and then we leave them here also? Um, yeah, yeah, and, um, it's, I'm sorry, I don't have the email address. I know that's. But I'll get it to you for sure, but, um, what I'll, what I'll, um, do is make sure we're absolutely certain that the flyers are here with the email address, the, um, rather the link, that you can sign up, because we do need people to sign up. So, and with that, um, I'm just gonna say happy new year to Nancy Kurtz. And that's it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I said move.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you. Ending adjourned until February sixth.